It's 5:50, nine and a half. We'll call a meeting order.
That's a bigger clock.
We have a whole plate this evening. So, all present with the exception of Pat, who has some family activities he's taking care of this evening, so he will not be here. Is there any approved, well, any changes to the agenda? I will make one. Item S, work comp liability insurance quotes, that's last. I'd like to make that more in the front of the agenda, and so I'd like to change. Make S actually, let's call it B1, so we'll take care of it sooner. Other than that, does anyone have any other items? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make one.
Rob? Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the amendments from one month ago, May 20th, 2013. Everyone have a chance to review them? Changes? If not, I'd look for an approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Scheduled presenters. We've been waiting for some time to get some legislative news, and I think they're such a, it's such a confusing thing for legislators. It's a confusing thing for our finance people, so I will let Beth carry the ball and just bring us as far to date, up to date as she can.
When I started this, I started with like 50 slides. Lot of information came out of this session, mostly good for Cannon Falls. It's the first time in a really long time where I left feeling really good, and they've been using us and schools like North Branch as examples. So, we know we have some good things coming. I did get this down to about 10 slides, so if there's questions or things you're really curious about, some of the exact items I'm going to leave for the curriculum committee and some of the breakout committees to get into, into the specifics with. Basically, a session overview, there was $485 million that they wanted to designate for education, and they were able to do that. The big ones were the general education formula, which you've heard me crying about over and over and over again. Cannon Falls ranks 331st out of 339 schools. That's not okay. It's never been okay, but that's where we're at. Statewide, all day, every day kindergarten went through. We were ahead of the game on that, getting that approved and ready to go. Early learning scholarships, which will be Jake's department, getting more and more kids into preschool. And then special education funding reform, you'll see them especially in year 15, where they made some huge changes. They did make some changes in statewide assessments, and we'll probably have Jamie Winchell, who's here tonight, come back and talk to us in the fall about that to go over some of those changes. Teacher licensing, which some of the people in the audience I know are well aware of, that's coming, and certainly our principals. And increased district accountability and reporting, which of course falls on Lori. More and more reporting all the time. And then we'll get into a couple of other things. But those are basically where they spent their $485 million. The general education overview, the pupil accounting changes, and we're going to get into that a little bit. Pension adjustment, I'm not going to get into, but in 1989, they, they did something with pensions, and they reversed that now. We were paying on things that those teachers no longer are here. It was an easy one to change. General education revenue, we'll get into that. The big ones that are going to affect Cannon Falls are down here with the operating referendum revenue and the location equity revenue. And the rest of those we'll go through a little bit, too. But those are the big ones. Pupil accounting changes, this is to simplify things. I think this will be a good thing and good for Cannon Falls generally. I'm not going to bore you by reading through all of those things. But pupil units and weights, we've talked about that before, where a high schooler's worth more than a first grader and all of those things. They had to change this for kindergarten, all day, every day kindergarten anyway. Those kids were at .62 originally. Now, to kind of push everyone into getting in all day, every day kindergarten program, they are offering you to all go all the way up to the 1.2. So, they're giving you more than a 1.0, but if you don't have it, you only get the .55. So, they're really encouraging to have all day, every day kindergarten. So that, again, if you guys passing that is going to be a good thing for us. Any specific questions on that? It's just a pupil, it'll, you know, kind of the funding we get in and certainly what Lori does. They did add on to the formula allowances for 14 and 15, basically a 1.5 in both those years. And you'll see later on, I'll break that down financially for you. We haven't had a finance meeting yet, and the reason for that is we didn't have our information quite back from Ayler's yet, but we'll get into that later. Some other things that I think they did a nice job on changing is the early graduation scholarships. They were really encouraging kids to graduate school early, pound them through, let them take all these extra credits, let them do online, you know, so their senior year, they could go into the workforce and go into school early. But what that was doing was taking a lot of schools' revenue. You know, we want kids here, we want them taking classes. Some verbiage came out through charter schools. And then the third one is districts may use the 2% of basic revenue set aside for staff development for their teacher evaluation uses. This was critical because with the new teacher evaluation programs that are coming, it's like, how are we going to fund that? What are we going to do? So, we can take some of that 2% and use it towards the evaluation process. Some schools are even looking at maybe an assistant principal to be able to do all of those evaluations and things that are coming that way. We don't need to make that decision now, but we will be going to our EA and asking for usage of that money. Pupil transportation, I'll simplify this by saying they did some really good things for us. These kids are going to PSCO and things like that, and we have to reimburse them for travel and all that. We can now transport if we need to and get reimbursed for that. And there's also some language on homeless students and how we can transport them and get funding for them as well. I added this mostly for Kurt because he had such a vision and such a strong, I guess vision is the right word, where he wanted to go with that strategic plan. And it started small and got bigger and bigger, and I think the people, several people even in the audience that were on that committee, we are ahead of the game. This is now a requirement. You have to have this, and you have to have these goals in place, and our strategic plan aligns to this. So, for them to come out, and now there's student accountability that goes along with it, so kind of kudos to you for getting that ball rolling and, you know, for supporting that and working so hard with us on that. So, that's why I added that. There's two of them in here. They give you what you have to have in that plan, and we have all of those things. We're way ahead of the game. One thing we've got done before we need to have it done. Assessments, again, I'm not going to get into this, it's pretty lengthy. I think we'll have Jamie come back maybe in the fall, or whenever you and the principals want to work through that and kind of give us an update on where some assessments will be. We talked a little bit about it tonight at our dinner admin meeting, and talked a little bit about assessments and what's going to be needed and not needed. Look at that cute kid. The financial impact, if you could go over there and hand out the two As, Bob, there's two sets, if you could pass those out to everyone. Basically, the financial impact that we've been given, and this is a little hard to do, and Josh is going to get this to later, Josh has been doing a great job with working at, if we were to do a renewal of the 500 referendum, or if we were to go 724, things like that, they are, they're different, you need one of each. One is 14, one is 15. This would be the impact for Cannon Falls schools, positive. Now, you're saying, how on earth can 15 be like that? That's your all day, every day kindergarten funding that they're giving us? And then fixing the special, a lot of the cross subsidy that's going on with special education. And again, Josh is doing a great job of working with those numbers. So, as soon as the finance committee decides where we want to go, and then the board decides after that, those numbers will change a little bit, but that's a good basis for you to see. Would you agree with that? Josh?
So, what you're saying is you have no changes at all, that's what, it'll impact us?
Yep. That's, when I talk about the legislative session, working towards Cannon Falls' favor, for the first time, we're not working against it. This is going to be positive for us. And I think it's about time, because we, our formula was so off, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later, but to have a school district like Randolph so close to us and doing a great programming just like us, and all these things are so similar, yet their funding was so much higher because they landed Dakota County, that just never made sense to me or to anyone. You know, we still have to educate the same child. So, what I gave you there is how we got those numbers. It's nothing more than that, throw it in a file. I don't expect you to understand it, but the number on the back is what, at the very end, is where I got the number, it's from the state of Minnesota.
So, now, is the 2015 year, is that compounded on top of the 140, or is that?
No, that's separate.
Okay, so it'd be 141 here, and then from the same baseline, additional 550?
Yeah, that's a good question.
And this has got nothing to do whatsoever with our referendum?
This would have your 500 renewal in there. And we'll get into that in a little bit, but I, we have to have at least that. And again, we'll get into that. Josh, again, did such a nice job of running numbers with, you know, 502, and then he ran it with 724, and we're going to get into that a little bit here. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves there because finance committee hasn't met yet, but I'm going to, I'm going to try to explain it a little bit. Basically, what happened in the legislative session was they acknowledged that some schools are having trouble passing referendums. So, what they tried to do was lower tax property base so that they could take some of this money and allow boards to renew $300, no matter what. They didn't ever want you to get stuck with zero, because they knew that you're automatically going to be in statutory SOD immediately. So, what they did is boards can now approve the 300, and that's the resolution that's on your, your agenda for tonight, is for if we decide to do that, you have the power, just like city officials do or anyone else does, to enact that $300. It says that you must have board action taken before September 30th. We're going to do that tonight, just so that we have it on file, in case that's what we want to do. I will hand out, the handout in just a second here. Location equity revenue is basically if you are one of the metro districts, which we are not, but we have land that lands in Dakota County. And what they decided to do is allow boards to also enact a $424 referendum on top of the 300, if you have property in one of the seven metro counties, which we do. So, it's basically trying to adjust and make things more equitable for everyone.
Now, is that an automatic number, is it anything up to and including 424?
They are allowing us to stack them, so you can do the 300 and the 424.
Let's say you want to do three and four, you could do, you could break that down to say it's a $400 one?
You could. You can do it any way you want. Yep. Remember, if you run a referendum, it's close to $8,000 just to run the referendum, and we don't have any board members, you know, it might make logical sense to do that. Again, I'm going to pass out a thing that you're going to be really surprised, even going to the 724, taxes are not going to be impacted, but we can, we can get to that. And then the last one is the 212 location. You have to have more than 200, or 2,000 students to get that money, which we don't qualify for. So, basically, do we qualify for the 300? If the board approves the resolution tonight, yes. You know that in the fall, you for sure have 300. Do we qualify for the 424 due to location equity? Yes, we do, because we have land that falls in Dakota County. And do we qualify, ooh, a big Q on that one, must be really important, 212, and the answer's no, because we don't have more than 2,000 students. So, if a taxpayer was to ask you about these three things, I'd hope that you could at least explain these three items. And that's basically all I have. I do want to pass off this last handout, just to give you an idea of what it would do. The first column is a renewal, and that would be our 502 that we currently have in place And again, no decisions need to be made tonight, at all.
424.
What's that?
For the 424.
For the 424, correct. And then the second column is if you were to just do the 300. The second, or the third column would be if you were to expire the, you know, if we decided to leave everything up to, like we always have, and it went down to zero because it will expire this year, that's how much it would be lowered. And then the final column is the 300 plus the 424. So, an example there, $100,000 home would be $15. So, they did a nice job with tax, property tax relief, that's what lowered everything. So, for example, the first column is the renewal of the 502. Look how everyone's taxes are going to be lowered, because they've lowered that property tax. So, that's why it's going to go down, even if they were to renew the 500 that we're currently at.
That's per year?
Per year, correct.
Then the next one is if we just ask for the 300 and not the 500, and we don't renew?
But just, just know that if you were to do that-
Right, I'm just looking at the numbers.
Looking for a number here, but I, I think we'd be close to, no, I got that, but we'd be making cuts of close to 500,000 again.
Right, I'm just looking to sort of understand the numbers going down.
Sure, sure, that's great. Zero would be everything expires, the board takes no action, you do nothing. And Ayler's put this, all these calculations together for us.
Okay.
And then the final one is, is where my recommendation would fall. This is what the legislature was trying to do for school districts like Cannon Falls.
But no renewal of the 500 on the last one?
No, because you're doing a three and, you'd be at 724.
We could replace it with 724.
Yep, you would replace it with a 724. Now, the question, Josh and I don't even know the answers, because we talked a little bit about it today, and it's still a bit unclear, is how many years does that last for? Some people have thrown around the number of five years, but I want to make sure whatever they allow us to do, that they can sustain it. What I don't want them to do is give, you know, $485 million out, and then all of a sudden, oh, we have to pull back your title program, and you can't have RTI, and, you know, there, you don't want them to start pulling all those other things to pay for this new commitment they've made. Does that make sense?
And they didn't say for how long?
I've heard five.
That's all for two, but-
But nothing, I haven't, I've not seen it, you know, purposefully written, five years.
If you can clarify about the 300 plus the 424, not saying it ever happened, but we have a 500 one that's going to be coming to an end now, would it be the 500, the 300, and the 424?
No, no, 724.
It'd have to be the max of 724.
These are without going to the public?
You, you can do whatever you want.
Right.
But without going to vote, saving the $8,000 in the fall, you don't have to go to a vote, you don't have to do anything, is 724.
Okay. And there's no benefit for doing one or the other, per se?
One over the other?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to have you hopefully pass the resolution tonight, that's your, that's your what if would happen? I mean, we want that 300 just in case something terrible was to happen, but it's just precautionary in my opinion. So, there was a ton, I mean, the information that we've been given from the state is a book. I tried to really simplify it there. I think you're going to hear a lot more come from the principals on a lot of areas, assessments and things like that will come out later. But financially, I wanted to let you know where we're at. I want to sit down with the finance committee, which is Bob and Kurt, and really run through some things, so they can bring a strong recommendation to you guys, so that when you make that decision, we've kind of followed the steps in doing that. But I have been telling you all along, it was a great session for Cannon Falls, and I think this shows that. Any questions, always, we'll move right on.
Again, it can be extremely confusing here, and we at least have some working knowledge of what's going on here. This is, you know, very good information, but we've been trying to pass referendums of 850 and 900, and failed, so this is very good news, but may not complete us until we have a chance to look at everything, to see if we're looking for additional funding, so.
Well, on top of that, though, to get the 1.5 and the 1.5 is covering that span. You know, when we were looking at 900, when they did the math, they agreed, too. I mean, people would look at our books and say, how on earth are you even doing this? So, I think with that 1.5 and the 1.5, that makes up that, that extra, that two.
When you say 1.5, where's that coming in at?
That'll come out, that 485 million. They, they took that and kind of dispersed it.
Okay, just as an increase?
Yeah, that's just an easy way to explain it on the formula.
Okay.
More news coming.
Josh, do you have anything to add? You've been working on a lot of this, too.
My thing is, is the $140,000 is addition on the funding formula, and the next would be a $550,000. We had already looked at spending down the general fund, the $100,000, so it's nice that we have that. Probably don't afford it, the chance to hit some buses or something like that. The nice thing with the 300 and the 424 other referendum is that they've given us now the authority to get our referendum dollars, the double tab, to go and ask the public to forward. And with the $500 one expiring, it's a good deal for our value.
Are you waving at me or trying to get the lights on?
Well, good news certainly hasn't come to us in five to seven to eight years legislatively, so we are past the point of being due, we're long overdue, so this is, you know, quite good news for our district, and it remains to be seen how good, but certainly a plus for us on just about all levels, so.
We still need to watch our pennies, just like we have been. I mean, this is, this is good, but it's, it's still not going to get us there. We still have to really be financially responsible. Good news nonetheless.
Right, right, as where your expenditures are going to be, where are you starving the most?
Yep. Okay, finance report. Josh?
First page there, just the capital worksheet, and I've updated through the rest of this for next fiscal year, for '14. Again, note up on top, there are no outstanding loans, we didn't have to do anticipation borrowing, and largely because the state has changed their funding back to what it probably should be, the 90-10%. It means we're not going to get as large of payments in August and September, but that's fine, we don't have to also pay back anticipation in August or September, so we end up kind of coming in the wash there. Kind of the unfortunate thing about this is we do have cash on hand, but they're really not a good place to get a lot of revenue out of. It had been many years ago, where we could make five, six, or four percent off of money, and now it's .15%. So, we are committed in the bank, we've talked to Greg at merchants, and they're fine with us being over the $1 million, they'll back our collateral on that, and we are earning .15% interest on that. So, we are earning a little bit of cash on our cash we have in, in the bank account right now, but it's not a high dollar thing. I guess the main thing is we're not gaining interest either, so. Next couple pages are going to be just a summary of the cash activity after bank reconciliation for last month reconciles, that's May, so we're comparing May 2013 versus 2012. Big thing to look again at, the general fund on the top, is we had $1.2 million of cash borrowed last year in order to give us that $720,000 cash positive balance. Now, we're at $1.70, $1.8 million in the general fund of our own cash, it's not borrowed. State still is holding funds from the shipping, but we're currently operating with our own cash and not borrowed funds. Food service, about $17,000 ahead of where we were at this point last year. Community had, there was a large tax shift that took place, it'd be two audits ago now, and that started to come back, so the community had funded back where it should be, or that's why it's a big variance from what we had at this point last year. But $136,000 ahead of last year. Debt service, about $40,000 ahead, and that's, it's all set by levy to fulfill our, what we call mortgage payment, or our debt service payment. Fund nine is trust and agency scholarship fund, that's about $20,000 ahead of this point last year. Twenty-five is the OPEB, and we've drawn down on that, so it's a little lower than it was at this point last year. The idea, again, to keep that going for at least 10 years as we pay off the OPEB debt, which is the fund 47. Next two pages are just the detail, if you want to see what kind of goes in and out on either a weekly basis or what comes in. Really, the only note that I have is you'll see just over $1 million of revenue in the general fund for May of 2013 versus just under $800,000 last year. And the big difference, again, is we're getting 90% of our funds for this fiscal year current, whereas last year we're getting 60%. So, that's really the big difference in funding, and why we have positive cash flow right now versus last year we had to borrow in order to pay our bills. Other than that, the rest of the fund really kind of fall into place real similar to the last year. So, if there are any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Is there a talk or shift this next year, is there still going to be a 90-10 shift?
There are working towards keeping it at 90-10, so we should be fine. The only thing is that the, we was at 90-10, then I went back to 64, with a 30% window there that eventually will have to get paid back. And these things like adding the referendum authority for us help, but they still are holding a large chunk of money as ours, but.
Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Under old business, booster clubs, we've, since January, we, we've made a decision that we have to know more about our booster clubs. They've, they've helped out the district in some pretty hard times financially, but I think it's incumbent on us as a district to understand what they do and how they impact us. And just more information about them, you know, they run pretty, I guess autonomously, and they've done a nice job for us, but at the same time, we probably should understand them better. So, in January, I asked Jerry as the high school league rep and Kurt, just to review them and see where we go with them, and you've been meeting with them, had at least a couple of meetings, I'm guessing, so, one of you, Kurt, would you?
Yeah, we, we got together, talked about kind of what Title IX all represented and what it all meant, and checking to see if we're in compliance with Title IX. There's some gray area out there that, you know, as a district, we like to assume whatever is gray, we like to make more black and white if that's possible. Looking at the groups in discussion, they were pretty well versed in Title IX. There are some things in question that we kind of clarified for what we thought as a district was, was appropriate and, quote, "non-appropriate." But they are 501(c)(3), where they are autonomous, so they can do what they feel is appropriate. And at that, at this point, because of it, and, you know, we do so much good, we decide that let them continue doing what they're doing, because they're doing a great job, and if we have any questions along the way as a district, question, and hopefully can have our questions answered, whether, whether it be, what are you doing for fundraisers, you know, can you share with us some of the fundraisers? And just in passing, and if you have any questions or concerns, we get together, maybe get together maybe once or twice a year, and talk to the booster clubs and see what concerns may be out there and how we might go about working together as a, as a district and the 501(c)(3) is out, 501(c)(3) is out there. So, Jerry, anything with that?
Covered most of it. Kurt and I also had a little bit of additional conversation, what do we really want to see from the booster clubs and, or for the school to see, so we know we're staying compliant, we're not doing anything out of bounds, per se. Going through with the booster clubs, I think each group learned a little bit, including us, we learned a lot, I think they learned a lot. There's a few things that we didn't make sure that everybody's in compliance with, and they are now. So, it was a good learning lesson, but I, I think, for myself and Kurt and I had had some conversation, I, I think as a, as a board, we should, some requests, what do we really want to see from, do we want to see, I wrote, I wrote a few things down. I mean, do, do we want to see a mission statement from the booster clubs as a, as a board, or their bylaws? Do you want to require them, or request them to have liability insurance? I think both me and Kurt really felt that was, was a big one, because there's been incidents in booster clubs, and not very far from Cannon Falls, that there was an incident with the booster club, and it's going to be costly to somebody. In the end, it falls back into school, if you're a booster club or not, you're utilizing our students to raise funds. Do we want to look at their P and L once a year, or have Jake or Josh look at it and review it? Then we'd know what the fundraisers are, we'd know where their money's coming in and where their money's going out. Do we, and we, one thing we talked, discussed, and Tim was in on the discussion, too, as far as parameters of request, when they're going to request money, if the coaches going to request money from the booster clubs. In the past, when it was a Cannon Falls booster club, they filled a request form, really made it simple. Now, with us really not knowing what's being requested, where some of that money's going to, which we kind of feel is, is really our business, we've gone that, back to that direction of getting a request sheet filled out. And then, do we want to request that all the funding goes to the school? It's, a lot of it's supposed to, I believe, like paying the coaches and some of that's-
It's supposed to be coming to the school.
I agree, when, we should have the, we should establish a set of guidelines for a district, for, for these organizations out there. Every, every, I don't think it's ever established when they went to these splinter cells, splinter groups. Every school out there has guidelines, and we should probably establish something to that nature. Basically, pretty simple, but just to explain what we would like to some extent, but again, But again, they're very well versed in Title IX. I think, I think we've all learned something as to what Title IX is all about and just go from that point. I am a little with you, Jerry, about liability insurance. I think that's a big issue out there right now, and it's something that should probably be looked at pretty seriously with all the, the five oh one C three groups out there.
Who's taking that next step? Is that Jake or who's?
Well, I don't know if we've really gotten that far yet, Jake. I mean, this is something that we're, we're talking about right here now, you know?
I, I think what I'm asking for would be looking for something from other board members to give us input and where do we want to go? Do we want to ask for these requests? Do we want to make certain things mandatory? Is it something that we want to bring back at a later date?
And that, that's one of the concerns.
Have a conversation on, I mean, it's.
That's one of the concerns a booster club had, you know, what's the board want or what are they requesting of us as well, so.
And they're, they're looking for direction, and Kurt and I are looking for more input other than from just Kurt and I.
Right. Do you think, do you think they have mission statements and bylaws? You know, I just, I, I worked with booster clubs when it originally was formed, and that was about the first steps we took, which is to say, here's who we are, here's the direction we're going. And the other one was, you know, they had a procedure in place for different sports to come in and say, this is what we like. They put a requester form out, like you're saying, and they handed it through the A D at the time, and he presented it to the, the booster club for approval or not. You know, he would, he would come in with it, he would explain what the needs are in case they had any questions on it. And then he left and left it up to the independent group to make decisions, and it seemed to work pretty well, I guess. So, you know, I, I would think to understand more about who they are, we should see their bylaws and mission state and just what they're trying to accomplish. Because, you know, that can get lost after a while. So I, I would echo you on the mission statement and the bylaws.
One, one thing they did request is the education foundation is, is part of this, even though they're not a booster club. They're, they're still affiliated with the school and, but outside of, I know those folks have a mission statement and bylaws, but outside of that, I think the dance has some. They're in the process of revising what they have and cleaning it up. Football, I don't know. And I don't know if our band boosters would count as the same because it's part of our fundraising. They're not a five oh three C or.
And they do run everything through the school?
Right. I mean, I, to me, that one would be no different than the volleyball program, the football program, the basketball program running through the school that we've already proved their fundraising efforts or any, any other outside group, but.
When you talk about the high school league, as you, as you contacted them in the past, do they have any firm rules of the road for us that would assist us?
In relation to?
Well, in relation to booster clubs, you don't think?
No, Dave Steed, he, he had his ideas as to what he's experienced in the past and what they quote, "recommend." But of course, they'll, they'll say that as a, they, they are autonomous, but as a school district, the district can ultimately have a say in what they'd like to do and how they, what direction they'd like to take it. You know, you can set up guidelines and, you know, it's up to these groups to, to quote, "follow the guidelines," or, you know, if they choose not to, what do we do? You know, is it necessary? Have you been doing that? I mean, let's face it, they do great, great stuff for the school, you know, how do you? But we still have to be careful as a district as to what our responsibilities are. They're representing auspices of our school district, so there's some representation on our part and some, I, I feel oversight that we should have as a school district as to what's going on out there too in some fashion. Well, this is in, in just general conversation with each group getting together once, twice a year and say, hey, how's it going? What are you guys doing? You know, where, where do you see you guys going as, what's your goal setting for your, your group, your organization? How are you meeting your goals? Where are your goals going to be? You know, and just discussing those things with them and see if they, if they kind of go hand in hand with the goals of our district and for the teams that we have out there, so.
I guess I look at it, there's a couple of different areas that were raised, I guess, in the last few months. One is fundraising. I mean, we do approve fundraising lists, but it's, it's almost just a poetic justice. Okay, here's the approved list. Are there more going on? Should they get list? Should we disband approving the list as a board? Are we just keeping the honest, honest, and those who don't, won't? I guess that's one of my questions moving forward.
Their, their answer to that is, as a five oh three C, they can do primarily fundraising activity they'd like.
Just like our Ed Foundation.
Without approval?
So why do we approve any fundraisers?
Because we're approving the non, we're approving the ones that go through the school.
And, and, no, educating the five oh three C, what is the five oh three C based on? It's an account. I know it's a type of, of a.
It's a nonprofit.
Right. Based on the school district? Or is it because I wanted to be a five oh three C, it's in my name and I am now a nonprofit? Or is this nonprofit based on the school district existing? If this school district, if the school district didn't exist, could their five oh three Cs exist or are they dependent?
Jerry, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, yeah, same.
Can it be independent or do you have to have the school to do that?
No, anybody can.
Can do a five oh three C.
Five oh one C three and now you're a nonprofit and people can get a tax deduction for donating to your organization, which is the whole point of why people do it.
So the question is, are they named after the school? I mean, again, is it kind of follows booster, so are we tied to it because of that? Or is it the, you know, Rob Seville, a five oh three C?
Dave.
You know what I mean?
Dave Steed, when you talk to him, he recommends that, that these organizations do not use the school name that would tie them in any way to the district because if something were to happen, could they go back and, you know, God forbid, you know, a lawsuit or whatever.
Right, then we're tied to it through that.
Right, they would rather say Cannon Falls Football Booster Club, Cannon Falls Bomber Football, they'd say, ah, maybe don't want to do that. So that's something that's never come up in discussion, but just if you're going to separate yourself from that, they recommend that that might be something you want to consider.
Okay, so we got five oh three Cs and then non-five oh three C fundraisers.
That's the ones that go through the school, and that's the list that you approve, okay.
Okay.
And, and part of my request for that is I don't want one of the booster clubs, say volleyball sells sunflower seeds that have been for twenty years. I know they don't, but I, I can't remember what they do anymore. I should. They did for a lot of years. Anyway. We don't want one of the booster clubs that are basically the new upstarts to overlap with some, a group that's doing something already.
Right.
You know, we, we want to have the ability to tell them, you know, we don't really approve that fundraiser because speech has been doing it for twenty years or volleyball, whoever. And, and they agree. I mean, that's, they'll tell us what their fundraisers are. They don't, no problem telling us what their fundraisers are.
I, I was thinking of something the other night too, and I haven't brought it up at all yet, but when they, when you use students as well, and that's something we might look up, is if your students are part of the fundraiser, and some places recommend that, that parents of the associations do the, the fundraising and leave the student athlete out. But if they're in any way in a fundraiser where they could get injured, you know, now are they, are those students part of the school district? And they were doing this for the school district, you know, or are they part of that nonprofit organization, working for that nonprofit organization? And that's what they recommend. They say that if you're going to raise money as a, a parent association, that the parents be the ones to raise the funds. Because there's some fundraiser out there, I think, you know, they're, they're putting docs in the water. You know, someone gets hurt in the water, doc falls down, who's liable if a student gets hurt? You know, that's one thing that came to mind here the other day.
And it goes back to the insurance that you guys are requesting.
Yeah, all about the liability issue.
But that's what me and Kurt are kind of looking for, for you guys, is, is there certain things that you'd like to have requested? Or is there certain things that you think as a district, we should require or that have?
The superintendent group was surprised we didn't have liability, or they didn't have liability insurance, I will say that. It seems like everyone does it differently, but that was one common thread, that everyone had some sort of liability.
We know the, the only ones that we know that does have it would be the mat rats. And when you're in mat rats, you, you pay a fee and you get a, a card. So every term you go to, each individual participant is covered as well as a refereeing. And then what they do when they have a tournament here, they, it costs them thirty-five dollars, but it goes through the same association. So it covers the event in case there is a issue at the event. So the only ones that we're aware of that actually do have some kind of liability insurance when there's an event here is the mat rats. Nobody else knows.
What does the M S V A say, or the school board's rule should be over these nonprofit groups? Are there any rules about that?
Well, it, this is from what in my talking with Dave Steed. His recommendation is that school have some oversight, whatever that may be, whether it's anything from just let us know what your fundraiser is going to be. Some people's schools put them on the calendar, make sure that, you know, it's all accounted for. Some may not do it at all. I haven't found that, but they're, from every school you talk to, they're, they're saying, yeah, they, they just let us know what the fundraisers are going to be, and we go from there. And that, he says, you have the right, if you wish to so choose to have them open the books up to you and see what the funds coming in and going out are. These are just things that he recommends. Don't have to. It can be very simple as to say, hey, how's it going? You know, what are you doing for this year for fundraisers? Oh, okay, sounds good. Do you need it in writing? Do you not need it in writing? So there's really, there's some gray there.
And the problem that we're running into is Minnesota State High School League had nothing, any kind of bylaw, no one has anything right now. And that's really what the problem is when, when it runs into this.
Yeah.
Because the groups are saying, well, we really have to develop it. We're, we're our own group.
So basically, as a school district, where it's black and, where it's gray, we can make a little bit more black and white based on what you want to do as a board, as a district. And if you want to make it very simple, we certainly can, if, you know, depending on where you think you need the, the quote, oversight, there is some guidelines, we can establish that.
Well, certainly the, the commitment when they formed the booster club was to assist in providing revenue for areas that we could not do. And so to me, you know, they made that, they made a commitment, and it's just the football. We would just use them for an example. So, you know, it should be incumbent on us to at least see how they're resisting us, if they're raising money to do that. So I would think somehow just an annual review of what revenue they've taken in and what revenue they've, they've spent on behalf of the district would be in order. Because that was the commitment they made, and the same with dance and the same with every other program that says booster to it. But that's my personal opinion.
I guess I would agree with that. Let's, I mean, put them all on the same page to begin with, so it's a standard requirement.
And, and when I wrote my short list, I tried to make it simple and really broad. That's not too cumbersome for them and it's not really cumbersome for us. We just want to know what they're doing. We just want to make sure that they're compliant with what we'd like to see as a district.
And I think you've, you've already found that, you know, there's been some expenditures that probably didn't fall in line correctly. And, you know, they're the first people to say, well, really, we won't do it again. I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for, to make sure that if there is something in the.
If you, some other schools, I don't think it'll ever happen to this school because I don't think we're large enough, but there's been some schools out there, some funds out there where they've raised a hundred and some thousand dollars, it's in their account. And they continue to go out and get fundraisers. It's like, what are you going for fundraisers for when you have this much money in your account and you're not spending it? You know, and it's like, spend it down, that, that's what it's for, you know, and just kind of making sure that that's happening, even though I, I don't think we'll ever get there. But, you know, I'd like to keep it as simple as possible, you know?
I think it'd be good to get a mission statement. I don't think these groups are probably going to have bylaws, or that's kind of like, seems like a ladder of tape to make them create bylaws if they don't have them.
I might be wrong here, but I think by law you have to have a mission statement and bylaws.
In order to be.
As a five oh one to be seen.
To be a nonprofit, huh?
I believe so.
We had to have both. We had to have both when we did the John Birch Park group, you know, that's, that's part of it, isn't it? I mean, they make you jump through a lot of federal hoops to a box.
We keep asking Jerry because she's the president of the Ed Foundation, so that's why we're asking her.
I think that's true, that they have to have both.
I think so too.
Before they can even.
Well, you've been working with it. It sounds like mission statement, bylaws are two areas and liability insurance. They can probably seek that out just to see what it's like and, you know, if it costs them ten grand a year, they can come to us and say, you know, that's kind of cost prohibitive. But at least they can do some research toward that, I have to think.
So if we go back to the groups, the representatives, what do we want to, as a district, propose? Other than mission statement, bylaw? Is there anything else?
I think it'd be nice to get a list of their fundraisers. I don't know if we need to see their books, but that's just my, but at least how list of their fundraisers, like we do the other groups.
I guess I like to start with more than less myself.
That's just my opinion.
You know, in my opinion, the fundraisers, the books, and at that point, then we know what we're looking at, then you compare it down to say, okay, next year, we don't want as much. We're fine. We've seen this stuff. The guidelines are set. Now we'll bring it back down to, you know, don't open the books. We just want to see where you're at. Maybe it's an every two-year occurrence now, but I guess we need, to me, it's a baseline. It's a starting point. And if we don't have enough data, we really don't develop a good baseline to start from, to, to know what we're even looking at.
And in reality, if, if we look at the books, we'll know exactly what the fundraisers are.
We should, yeah, and, and we'll know, so get the money that's being brought in from those fundraisers.
Right.
So can we go without the fundraiser and just request the books?
We could request the books and we can see what the fundraisers are. We can see what their intake is, what their intake is, know if they're.
As long as they are, they coincide, yeah. We should know what the fundraisers are, that lighten the books. That makes sense.
Their fundraisers may change or they may, you know?
You know, it's always, I, I think there's a difference between a club, like I think the F F A that sells door-to-door oranges and, you know, produce and somebody who sponsors a golf tournament, which doesn't necessarily impact me. I don't, I don't golf. You know, if I choose to, you know, provide funding or sponsor a hole, that's one thing. But sometimes the, the difference in these fundraisers and how they impact individuals is quite different.
Well, and I guess part of my question is, could they start to mimic another one if it's a successful one? You know, right now, we've got dance that does car wash, someone else wants to do car wash, someone else wants to sell treat, you know? All of a sudden, you know, we don't know, and it's like, wait, wait, you're stepping on another razor toes.
Right.
To understand that even, you know, golf today, new tournament.
The only thing I really want to ask is that we don't, I don't want to upset something that's working so well and, and funding things that there's no way I can afford helmets for our football players and things like that. So I like the approach you're taking. I like the work you've done. I just don't want to get so into their books. I mean, we're not asking to see Ed Foundation's books. We're not asking to see any of these other groups. I think we just kind of, you know, let's not upset a cart that's going in the right direction and certainly funding a lot of things that we can't do. So I, I guess that's all I, I just want to say on that.
I agree with you, but, you know, at least the foundation has, has bylaws and mission statements and that, you know?
Right, and I think all that's good, but the books is maybe a little bit different.
And they seem to be a little bit more transparent, maybe. I don't know, just because they're more public.
And some of these clubs are not as old as the, the Ed Foundation. They're kind of in a, in a phase where they're just kind of discovering who they are as well, so.
Yeah, and I think if you want, I mean, the four oh one C three, you can, it's by law, you can request anybody to open books up. You could probably get online and look at them. I don't, but it's, it's, it's just always up there.
I hope they don't get us set by this. I mean, we're not trying to change anything.
No, we just want to see, especially like the fundraising stuff. I, I'm like, I, I just would like to know what their fundraising is. I don't really care if they're, what they're sitting on as far as funds right now. Because there's always so much that we're able to technically be able to take in only because we need to be real conscious of keeping it square with title line. You know, just because there's a football booster and a, a dance booster doesn't mean they're always going to offset. So if football wants to give a large sum of money, we as a district need to know how we're going to offset that title line money. Correct, Jake?
Yeah.
So we, we have to be very cognizant of what we're really taking in from them versus what's on the other side.
Well, we'll send you on your way to continue discussion with them.
Well, what do we want to go back with? What do we want to recommend? I think that's what you're wanting.
A mission statement, bylaws, do we want to recommend that they get liability insurance or?
We certainly want to recommend that they inquire about liability insurance and see, you know?
I mean, that's one of the standards out there. I think it should be, but, you know, I'm talking to the wrong guy.
That's as a district, we need to make that decision because that's where every school will make their own decision as a district. It's either, you know, if we go with request versus require, you know, we need to as a district right now make that decision. Because if not, we'll just, it, it doesn't even matter putting it out there. All these other districts saying, we will require as a school district that you obtain liability insurance. We can't go back and say, well, we're kind of thinking maybe you'd hopefully go out and get liability insurance. It's still going to put the district in, in a, in a position where we don't want to be. So it's either we go to the booster club and say, you need to get liability insurance. If not, you know, what do we do next? And I don't think it's going to be an issue with the booster clubs at all. I just think that if that's something that the school district wants to do, we need to be firm about it. Go back and say, we need you to take in liability insurance. That's all.
Beth, do you know what other schools do or do you have any ideas?
I brought it up at the H Vale meeting and they just said they, they, most of them carry liability insurance.
But do you know if they have to require the nonprofit groups to?
I can collect that data in a couple of days. Yeah, maybe get it back. I, I think everyone does it very differently. I know you talked to Plainview. They do it much differently than we do, much different than Cassin does it. So I think everyone's kind of got their own system, but I could collect that data really easily for you.
It's a dollar bond that they're insured four million per occurrence or? Dollar about that they're insured four million per occurrence, or...
But really, what many others are trying to, to have less booster and just have a main booster. But we've never, you know, when you've been looking at that and some discussion, there doesn't seem to be any one type that fits all. So...
Well, I don't want to discourage groups that are doing it.
Right, and we, we've made that very well known to the Booster Clubs. We're, we're really formed because we know they're really assisting a lot of our programs.
Yep. But in the same, at the same time, we, as a school, need to make sure that we're compliant as well.
Well, I think if you, if you look at those two or three items, and ongoing discussion about how we, how we review expenditures versus revenue, I think that's more of an ongoing than a demand or anything like that. Let's just, let's just continue conversation with them.
Just going to leave it all, it's per dollar as a request.
This is a discussion item, so... The one thing that I found in discussion that I thought was unusual was in the football program, in, in talking to someone associated with it, they said they have helmet issues and, you know, if somebody gets injured wearing a helmet, there's a warranty on them if they keep those helmets refurbished. I don't know what the right word is, Jake, but...
Refurbished, yeah.
Okay, annually. If they don't, they buy a new helmet and they haven't had it checked out over three years, there is no warranty on it anymore. Correct?
At a certain time, yeah.
So there's a possibility that the safety issue, when, when we talk about expenditures for athletics and we say each program is going to get X amount of dollars, I think our minimum baseline standard would be to include safety and pay for that. That shouldn't be incumbent on a Booster Club to pay for safety. That should be the school district's responsibility. So I don't know what it costs us, but eventually, I, I hope Jake could come up with a number, because that's up to us. That's not up to a, a third-party Booster Club to bankroll that. Just an opinion, but I think we should look, look into that. So, okay.
Good discussion. Under new business, the consent agenda, these are considered routine items and can be enacted under one motion. Unless a board member wants to deplore, he can help for more discussion. I would look for you to review that and give me a motion either way.
I would make a motion to approve.
No, seconded. Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
We do have one resignation on there. I just want to acknowledge, and that's Suzie Mayer. She has worked at both the elementary and the high schools. They're professional for our district. She has three kids that go to our school and just has been, I mean, in so many capacities, a wonderful addition to our school. So we wish her the best of luck in their move, and just want to thank her publicly for all that she's done for our district.
Noted. Thank you. Approval of the expenditures attachment F. If you haven't had an opportunity, let's just take a minute to look at those over, and if you have any questions, you can talk to either the treasurer or Jake.
We've got like three roof payments in here, 40119.
Yeah, four banks in town. We, it's our manager lease a roof, but essentially, it's a lease payment for the elementary roof when we did that, and...
Is it an annual payment, or...
Ah, by annual, yep. Ends up being a hundred fifty-eight thousand for the year.
I mean, what years do we have on that?
We still have twelve. We got paid all of it earlier, so maybe in that ten, twelve, over range, yep.
We don't really want to pay it off. That's when something happens.
I'll make the motion for approval of the expenditures. Seconded. Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Jerry. Anyone else for a good discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item B1, that's moved up from item F, but on the agenda. Consideration to approve work comp and liability insurance quotes, actually property insurance as well.
I was going to say, attachment Q, I was kind of pretty quick, kind of go through with your sheet and what you're comparing. Go for property and work comp insurance quotes comparisons, and find out through this process. It takes quite a bit of time. It's not in your normal two-week turnaround on the quote. It takes a lot of time to get all the information pulled back in, how to put out information. The RFP that went out, pretty boilerplate, but in the end, after the quotes, try to get it something to compare apples to apples. So the information you see on this sheet is the same information I requested back from people who went out to quote. I received two quotes back. One from Ron Freeburg as the agent for Riverport Insurance for property, and then Ram Mutual for the work comp. I've got it listed incorrectly, the Riverport, but it's Ram Mutual. And then Mark Kramer's as the agent for EMC Insurance, doing both property and work comp. And just kind of try to list down the different areas, and it's based off our current policy, is what we have for limits for property and land marine general liability and whatnot. I see a property insurance total from each agent, and then work comp total from each agent, and then a grand total together. Combined, the Riverport Ram total, a hundred thirty thousand sixty-four, EMC a hundred thirty-three thousand nine thirty-five. One thing to note in that quote is that the inland marine would not have to be in that bid, it would be part of the property. So really, that total quote would be one thirty, one seventy, one hundred and ten dollars more than the Riverport Ram quote. And that is just on the side there, just to kind of compare what would happen, or what happened from our actual last year. Paid about sixty-six thousand dollars in property insurance last year, almost fifty-six thousand in work comp for a total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So both bids, very competitive. I appreciate both, the work that both gentlemen put in, providing the quote. About eight thousand dollars more than what we paid last year, which on a total product of that cost, not a huge increase. But again, very tightly contested, a very close bid. Ron's been doing school business in here for about twenty-five years, and very good rapport with the district in where we have things that go on. So as far as quality services from what we have currently, there's absolutely no reason to not go, not stay with Ron and Freeburg Insurance for that work. The only reason we went out for quotes is just to make sure that we're being competitive on the price, is the reason we went out for the quotes in the first place. If you have any questions, I'm trying to do my best to answer. I'm not an insurance expert by any means, and don't want to be.
It is boring sometimes.
It is very boring.
You know, it must be a pretty tight market right now. I, I don't know how many, how many picked up packets, which is a quote process, but only two came back, so it must be not very many involved right now. I had some conversation with EMC after quotes, and again, it's been board history that we don't necessarily take low quotes. We at least look and see what fits us best. And, you know, most notably, I guess lawn mowing was our most recent one. But, you know, real briefly, there's a, there's an ISO standard, and you can deviate from that, or you just take that ISO number, Insurance Services Office. And, you know, everything is kind of structured off that and allows companies to deviate from that. Essentially, you can either get the book rate, or you can get a rate with discounts and everything else. So if you look at this, the, the biggest difference between the two is the property. One would look like it bids right off the book rate, and one that looks like it's using discounts, and maybe that has to do with long-term lack of claims for whatever, for whatever reason, but there's a very significant difference. The, the agent for EMC has essentially told me that they, they'd be willing to deviate off of that, and deviate off of that substantially. And it has to be the board's decision whether we're looking for the lowest possible bid, even if it's amended, or here's your quote, we're going to stick with it, and here's the bottom line. So that's up to you for discussion, but certainly, there's an opportunity for that, that property quote to go much lower. But then, you know, in my discussion with, with the EMC, it, it's always meant a lot to us to do business as locally as we possibly could. And, you know, at what point does a lesser premium need to be significant before we, we deviate from that philosophy, I guess? So I guess that's a discussion item that we can have.
Well, I think if we're going to give one group the opportunity to amend their bid, you have to also give, give Riverport the same opportunity.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there.
I guess my feeling is, nothing has changed. There's no addendum sent out that there's any changes in our property or facilities. Pretty, pretty set up, structured, everyone, it was pretty laid out when they came up to bid. If they could have done better, they had plenty of time to come and look at the facilities. I guess my opinion is, their bid is what they're, it is what it is. If they think they can get better, then bring back better next year. That's my two cents worth. If, if they can do better by, they bring better up front.
A quote is a quote, actually, not a bid is a bid.
Right.
A quote is a quote.
We'll get that right.
A quote is a quote. There's no addendums made, so they, they saw what they had, and I don't think their deviation is anything new for those folks. That's just my, that's my two cents worth.
My little two cents worth, and I guess I learned this from Dave Davidson, he always talks about companies I work with. I don't think a week has gone by this year that I have not called Jerry or Ron and gotten great feedback and positive, quick response. And we've had a lot of incidences. We had a flood June fourteenth of last year. We've had, I mean, we've had some really substantial big things. We've had a bus in an accident. We've had staff that are injured. I mean, I could go on and on, and I think something is to be said for a company that has worked really well with me, and, and been very responsive. Brett laughs. It is tough to work with me sometimes. But both Jerry and Ron, and the company in general, has been really good at, at getting back to Josh and I on anything that we've needed, so it's my two cents worth, I guess, too.
So Bob, when you talked to this, to Mark, didn't you say why you didn't discount him at all?
I'm not sure that he was able to at the time. You know, sometimes when you bid off something, you don't have a, and the company they're dealing with, you know, the agent contacts the company, if, if they don't have any history, or they don't maybe know the buildings. You know, we have, we have a sprinkler set up in here, and maybe there wasn't a sprinkler discount. And we have some old buildings, meant much of it's been refurbished, and that's a positive thing, but maybe they weren't aware of it. So just a lot, a lot of different reasons why.
I think unfortunately, that whether or not that's the case, I think we need to stick to what the quotes are, or else we can get ourselves into a whirlwind of problems that way, too. We've been through a lot with the weather and what's happened, and my, my question, and you've answered, that we've had issues and with what's, we've been dealing with, with all of these issues with the school and the property damage, and it sounds like it's been going very smoothly. So I, for the cost where we're at, I'm, I'm happy with where we're at.
Well, I'm going to make, can I make a motion?
Yeah, you sure can.
I'm going to make a motion to stay with the Riverport Insurance.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry. Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Okay, jumping now to item C, consideration to improve athletic trainer services agreement for thirteen fourteen, attachment G. You wish to speak to that?
I certainly can, or Jake?
Went up a little bit in prices when I pulled from the last two years ago in the April bid, but how do I like to exchange? They will cover soccer games.
They will.
But not as many volleyball matches because of the kind of trade-offs, so.
Jake, do you know what percentage Mayo is paying for this as well?
I do not know, man. I was told, I guess I, I know a lot more than I would pay.
Okay.
Yeah. They did a pretty good deal.
So sponsoring organization, if I just jump to page twenty-four, sponsoring organization shall pay Mayo a flat fee of ten-two. So that means our district is paying ten thousand two hundred for the services they're having. We have, we have used these services a lot of times for ten grand. I think that's a steal, actually.
So do we, or do we just have two copies in here?
What's that?
Looks like they have the same thing twice.
Oh, I don't know.
Same, or...
Page eighteen.
I just, no, it looked like it's August twenty thirteen. Okay.
I was trying to use a whole paper, I guess.
I understand. I just want to make sure this is something between the two. She's up there, she has it.
I'll just have a question on, on the contracting, whether it's oversight or maybe this is finite. I'm looking at section two, item C, it says, a sponsoring organization shall post signs, banners, and any website banners created by Mayo at events and areas designated by both parties identifying sports medicine services. Sites will include gymnasiums. Do we, do we, as a district, say, okay, we will put in this, we will advertise what we wish to advertise? Are they saying here that you will advertise if we so choose to put banners up?
They've always brought it to us and had it approved by us, to make sure we like the sign, but they've always been appropriately, you know.
It's their way to keep the cost valid. Yeah, I think they want to, I think they want to step it up, though. I don't know if it's either follow-through.
He brought some samples in of what they wanted to do, but it wasn't inappropriate, I don't think.
It's the, you've seen them other places, Mayo Health System, hanging into the gym or above the...
Well, I'm just wondering, as a district, do we lose that ability to say no, when, if we did choose not to, not saying, but, I mean, we as a district, we don't want to lose that ability to say, no, this is as a district, we will say what you can and can't put in here. Here, it sounds like, you know, based on our contract, you have to put this in the gym if we so choose to do that. You know, I'm just wondering, do we want to do, is that what we want to do? Even though it's, we talked about they're, they're good in compensation, but here, what I read is, if we decide to put this in your gym, you will put this in your gym.
Oh, I can read it, it says, agreed upon by both parties.
Yeah, and they brought everything, it needs to be pre-prepared.
So if we don't approve, then both parties approve it.
Okay.
You get nothing.
Well, and I look at this one, Kurt. So it's a one-year term.
Yeah.
If, if it's been this way in the past, and it's all been good.
Yep.
If we, for some reason, think it's getting a little bit of an odor or something that we don't want.
They had little flyer things they wanted to give the kids, and I said no, because they'd end up on the floor all over.
Just a point, I just didn't want to...
Is the purpose advertised, or the purpose to let people know that there's an issue, they've got a person here from Mayo to assist?
Okay.
So I think it's a little of all.
A little of all, okay.
Probably no different than Coca-Cola had the scoreboards and some of that stuff, too.
Okay.
Coke Mayo.
Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consideration.
I'll second. Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt to approve the services agreement for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Resolution relating to conducting a referendum revenue authorization election in twenty thirteen pursuant to statutes.
This is relevant to what we talked about before. I think every district is doing this just to cover themselves. You have to have it on the books by June thirtieth of this year to have any authority in the fall. You want to have this available if you need it. So do my recommendation to approve this resolution?
The procedural step necessary, right?
Correct, yeah.
This is for that three hundred dollars that we talked about.
Correct, the three hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to...
No, can't do that. We've got to do a resolution on this one. That's okay. Brenda wanted to read something.
Okay.
We need a motion in a, in a second, anyway.
We need a motion there. Did you need a motion?
So Rob, you made a motion?
I'll make a motion to do a resolution.
Yeah? Who's the second?
I'll second.
Carrie? Okay, Brenda.
Okay, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district members, two fifty-two. The board hereby declares its intent to hold a referendum revenue authorization election in twenty thirteen pursuant to Minnesota... in 2013 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 126(c)(17).
Is that the main jewel part? Yes.
Yep, you're good. Over there with you, Kurt?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Okay, the next three are individually wrapped, I guess, in considerations to approve resignations of teachers due to data privacy. That's all we can include in there.
Yeah, we will say their names, just like MSB has told us to do. Letter E, consideration to approve resignation of teacher is Mr. Athol. He currently teaches fifth grade. I personally have taught fifth grade with him. He has definitely been our longevity in fifth grade. Every year, we have a fifth grade opening, it seems, and he's been very good at being a mentor and that long-term type teacher that we've had down there. He's also done a lot to turn around our science program as well at the elementary. So with that, we wish him the best of luck in his endeavors, and we're gonna miss him.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. F, consideration to approve.
This one is Kathy Sessions. She currently is a special education teacher at the elementary. If any of you have ever met her, she is one of the most hardworking people you've ever met. She actually, when she brought her letter up the other day, we realized how many sick days she has left. I don't think she's ever used one in her tenure here, and she loses all of those. But she's been a real dedicated person to the program and to those kids, and we're all gonna miss her very much as well. She's been a kind of a family member to all of us, so we're gonna miss her.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Rob, motion. Jerry, second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item G, consideration to approve the resignation of a teacher.
I don't want you to panic on this one. Sharon Noble. But she's not going anywhere. What has happened, Sharon has become a real integral part of my admin team. I need her at all those meetings. I need her leadership. I need her to do exactly what she's doing now, but I also have a hard time when she goes to the EA meetings. And I'm sure the teachers do, too, because she comes to the admin meetings, and she's doing both jobs, and that's not fair to Sharon. And so the Goodhue County Ed District came up with a solution for all the special ed coordinators, if they wanted to move over to their contract. So she will now be employed by the Goodhue County Ed District. There is a statute 121.3, something like that, that if her position was ever cut with Goodhue County Ed District, she's very protected under this statute. You can move back to your home district, same seniority, same everything. If she has been there three years, she moves over to us three years higher. It protects the employee, but it also gives some protection to the school as well. I need her to be a part of the admin team and not on the teacher contract here. I can't afford to pay her as an admin, and she actually, you know, has lost her stipend in a lot of things that way. She doesn't make any more money. She's not doing anything. She's actually doing the district a huge favor, I think, by doing this. So the process is she has to resign to move over there, and then if she was ever moved back, the statute covers her. To extra cover her, I also wrote a memorandum of understanding that is signed by Sherry Johnson, myself, and Sharon, just in case Sherry was ever gone, or you have a different superintendent or whatever, she would have that MOU attached with that statute, so there would never be any problem to protect her coming back.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
So are we guaranteed likely that she would stay with Cannon Falls, though she's working for the ed district? She couldn't go to Red Wing or to another part of that ed district?
You know, that is something... she won't leave us. I know she won't.
Is it her call?
Well, here's the thing. I mean, it really is. She has a lot of seniority even amongst the Goodhue County Ed District. As a matter of fact, I think you're the highest... I mean, it would take... every school district would have to rearrange before that would happen. I would actually make her come back on our contract before they could do that.
Well, I know Sherry was saying, well, we want you over there more than we want you there, and that's what you report to.
Nope. Nope, that's not how this works. Nope. Nope. I can call her back anytime.
I would fight that.
Yeah.
Is there a memorandum of understanding there, too, then?
It's pretty clear. In all seriousness, it's very clearly outlined. I'm not gonna give up something that's perfect, you know? I mean, I can't, so...
Well, you know, you had control. If we gave this way, you lose that control.
I feel like we have just as much control, if not more.
The double of the same.
Yes, nothing's changed.
Okay. We have a motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item H, consideration to approve the resolution discontinuing all transportation regular and special route driver positions. Just an extension of the work that we've been going through for transportation.
Right.
And once you okay this by resolution, that will put SafeLink as a responsible party for our drivers. And we've worked out contracts with them, both under finance and under rules and regs, so everything is in place. And if you look at Attachment I, I believe, if you have any questions, you can see the hired drivers or the discontinued drivers. And it would be up to SafeLink. They've hired their own staff, and I guess it looks very much the same.
Yes.
So in a contract like this, how does disciplinary actions take place for students? Is that all taken through?
We're working on it. The students will still occur within the school district. Students are ours.
Okay.
They're theirs.
We really want it to be that way.
So Brenda, I want you to read the whole page. Just kidding.
This is not the resolution.
What area does she need?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all right. Jerry?
Just the top person.
And Rob?
Think we have discussion?
I just forgot to bold it.
Can we win a discussion?
Sure, we can do that.
So if SafeLink doesn't hire all our student-based雇员ees, they're eligible for unemployment, or how... where does that fall?
They could. I don't want to put Andy on the spot right now. They could, but he's done all the interviews, and they want a job, they'll be driving.
Okay.
I threw a question.
That's okay. I guess covered.
Put him on the spot.
Stay out of the hall, Andy. We're good.
He's so shy.
Okay, any other discussion? Brenda?
Okay, the resolution discontinuing all transportation regular and special route driver positions, whereas the School Board Independent School District Number 252 has entered into separate master agreements of both the transportation regular route drivers and the transportation special route drivers of both the school district. Do I need to read them all?
Nope.
Okay.
That was supposed to be bolded.
Is that good enough?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll start over here with Rob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Jerry?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. It's a new endeavor for us, actually, everyone. It's probably a new endeavor for most every district in the state. There's few, if any, that have this.
We're moving to it all of a sudden.
They'll all be looking to us.
We stated something. I'm getting lots of calls.
We're talking about you again, Andy. I heard that.
Okay, Item I, consideration to approve membership into C's, continued membership into the school for economic or equity in education. They've, I don't know, we've been with them for about 10 years. I think they lobby for districts like us, and they've made a significant impact, which I think we'll see very soon financially. And, you know, it's... I would like to think it's kind of a cost of doing business that we have somebody lobbying for districts our size in rural Minnesota.
The other thing they do is they really educate superintendents, I think, on all of the things I just talked about tonight. You know, it's education for me and for the district as well. And they really do do some... Brad Johnson, who you guys have met, Lundell. I kind of knew that at some meeting with Brad Johnson. Brad Lundell, he's from Cannon Falls, and he works wonders for us, that's for sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the membership into schools for equal equity in education.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the health and safety policy 807, attachment K.
This is just a standard one you do every year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve attachment 10, health and safety budget. It says attachment 10, see attachment L.
Just a point of inquiry, for like 2015, when you look at physical hazards, and, you know, for 2013, it's $3,624,000. For 2014, then it bumps up to $65,000 for 2000... how does that all equate? How does that all figure, the costs, expenditures?
Right now, it's health and safety is the estimated thing, just because different things come up, you know, put it in. The fiscal year 2013, that's basically kind of what's on our books or what we've done. But the reason the increases in the next two years is because I'm looking at putting sound panels that would hang in between inverters and the ceiling of the gym and the fieldhouse, because I don't know, as a drummer, but I can only handle so many drums in the gym here. Put that in the sound there, and then part of the fieldhouse. I had Arm Comp come down and give me a price, and he looked at it, so I haven't got the price. I'm estimating that it'd be $18,000 to do that in the gym and $60,000 to do the field.
Okay.
But then I gotta finalize, see if it'd be something that would fall under health and safety. And we'll get one through there, because if it doesn't, then we'll probably go a couple of years down the road before we do it. So that's why that's in. Otherwise, it'd be about the same as each year.
And there are other programs that the school has to comply with.
Yep.
That come up every three years, or it just really depends on what it is. Like our class studies, there's an initial program they have to do, but then after every next couple of years, they have to go back and have it updated or revised. And my guess would be Dave's taking that into consideration, too, of what's coming up, air balance in the school, or art class studies, or whatever.
Okay. Okay. Look for a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. You were involved, Brenda.
Going both.
Consideration to the proof to approve the purchase of two new buses or two more buses.
Well, let's...
Don't let this all get to you.
We've met with transportation several times. Andy, are you listening?
Yeah.
Hey, correct me if I say anything wrong. We were able... Andy did a great job of talking them down on a price on a bus that we used in the rental of the accident that we recently had, and I did go ahead and purchase that bus for the reason that we had to replace the one that was out. That didn't take any board action, per se. Our next step is to look at, and we have talked about this many times, the lease options of buying two new buses. One side, you'll see the 81 passenger, and the other side is the 83 passenger. What Andy would really like to do is buy 181 and 183. I'd like to finance them for that five years, and I've talked to Josh about this, making sure it works in the budget and things like that, for around $37,000. It'd be a little bit less than that, because we'd be doing the 81 and the 83. That fits into our budget wonderfully. Even if it went up to $40,000, we'd have two new buses, pay for them over the five years. And I know that's a new concept for schools, to not immediately pay cash for everything. But we can finance these at 2.8% and have two new buses in our rotation. The price will actually go down in the long run, because we'll sell two buses off and get obviously something for those buses as well. What am I forgetting, Andy?
We're gonna save like $8,000 on buying an 81 passenger. It was considered a conventional bus, where the motors, the hoods out in the front. Those flat nose buses are, they're called transit style, and we have three of them now, and we're gonna get rid of those three and just have one of those and buy some 81 passengers. And what it does is make a little bit less legroom on those buses, but you're saving $8,000 right up front, and there are a lot less maintenance involved on those buses. Those flat nose buses are a lot of maintenance.
The other thing is Ryan has brought me his proposal. Every year, you guys have approved anywhere from $16,000, then you did $24,000 on fixing up buses. The two that need to be rotated out, when Ryan gave me the list of fixes on it, we're kind of to the point where it doesn't make sense anymore to do those side panels and to fix the rust on those. We certainly can do that if you choose to. I'll support any decision you decide to do here. But we have talked about new buses since I was a principal. I mean, we've talked about doing new buses, and we're kind of at the point where I don't know if Andy and his team can continue to fix what we have. We've got to get a couple new blood in there. We've got a very old fleet.
How old is the one that we already purchased, beside an '06?
Seven?
'07?
'07?
And what's our newest bus right now beside, what's the last name, about '09?
'89? Just kidding.
So it's... so you're getting like two and a half new buses on the field?
Right. No, we really like the new bus that we...
Yeah, the new bus is a nice bus, or that used bus.
It's a used new bus to us.
Any news?
I just think, you know, we're at a point where we have saved and saved and saved, and you saw, you know, last month, I think Josh did a nice job of presenting where we are. We're watching our pennies. We're doing everything right. And I think our reason for not buying the buses the last few years is we needed to do a lot of things first. We made it through reductions. We're not reducing teachers and programs, and I just, I think we're at that point where if we don't get something, some sort of rotation going here, we're just setting ourselves up for disaster down the road, in my opinion. So for under $37,000, we can get two new buses for five years. Josh has worked that into the budget. I think it would be a smart move, but...
Rob started working on this as a transportation liaison quite a while ago, and you looked at new purchases, leased purchases. Is this your recommendation?
It is. I like the lease option instead of the cash out, of just buying them outright, which puts a strain on the district. You know, we've been having some, I wouldn't say issues, but we've had some hardships with some of our buses, and, you know, we've talked about this for a long time. I think for the amount of money we spend annually, we're gonna... I mean, this is actually a good time with the '07 that we've got, two brand-new ones. I like your input as far as, you know, the stuff mode being a lot more maintenance. If we don't need them for two more passengers, let's get something that'll last longer with less maintenance and start getting ourselves healthy again, bus-wise. So I agree, it's time. We need to start putting some money there as well.
So we're looking at going with 181 passenger or 183? Is that what it was?
I would be Andy's recommendation, do 181 and 183.
The ones with flat nose, but the routes we have, we can't, we have to have at least one of those.
Okay, that's what my question was.
Or get the 81 passenger, which would normally be 77 in that configuration. They'll make that bus one foot longer and add some seats. So that'd be the backup for that flat nose, for that new flat nose.
We're hoping that our district will grow with numbers of kids. We want to have the bigger buses to support that growth.
And we seem to be buying a lot of Bluebird, is that?
Very small kids.
Thomas. So that's the bus of choice for our maintenance department as far as ease of work and such as well?
No, you're the... You're the better bus owner.
You're the authorized dealer or...
Repair warranty.
...or a team facility, which helps, I think, for speed and...
Makes sense.
Yeah.
We talked about this for a long time.
I have.
I think it's time to act.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of two buses.
Jerry, to approve the lease, two buses. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve the purchase of an ed district van.
It's our rotation. Every fifth year, we're... there's five districts in the ed district. It runs through our funding. It's the fifth year.
Just give him Sharon.
I just gave him Sharon.
On paper, that's what they had.
We're not... it ends up being a how you... it's just our turn.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the ed district van.
I'll second. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Any more discussion?
Do we buy their year-old van in this company?
They're hoping to get a trade-in, which we want because it'll be less than what we have to... Plus you can't transport kids with their van, that's why they have to rotate it out.
Okay. All in favor of the purchase of the Ed District van? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Do a lot of sync, Brenda. Consideration to adjusting student days from one-seventy-four to one-seventy for the twelve-thirteen calendar.
These snow days just won't leave us alone. We adjust the calendar every year, whatever you have for snow days. We're still well over what you're required to have, so we're...
This is for last year?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Last year's calendar.
I'll say.
You do what we report to the state, how many student days we have. Yep.
Motion by Jerry, while you guys are talking, motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt.
Multi-asking.
Now you can, now you can answer.
Ask a question. That's why we're approving a past history calendar.
You have to, whenever you report it to the state, Lori has to approve how many days the kids were actually here.
Oh, is that right?
Yep, and we're still well over what we need to be.
Okay, we're gonna motion the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the premium twenty-thirteen, fourteen budget, Attachment M.
Last month went through the revised fiscal year thirteen, and this will be the initial or preliminary fiscal year fourteen, next year's budget. Just kind of some things to note, and the first page is just the bare bones, not some bullets, here's your summary, buy fund. And for most is more than adequate. The next few pages are gonna be broken down by program. And then if you're really care to see the seventy-five page one, you can come to my office and I'll show you, I'll walk you through it. But generally what we see here on the first page of the summary is, in general fund, revenues less than expenditures of forty-six thousand dollars. And just to kind of explain how that number arrives a little bit, throughout finance meetings and the process of reductions, we had talked about reducing next year's general fund by about a hundred thousand dollars. And doing that and then receiving the new formula from the state, we're receiving about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of newer revenue that would put us at a plus forty thousand. And I put in for transportation, purchasing of the buses and the vans, about eighty thousand dollars, so that brings it back down to that negative forty-five thousand. So the increase of a hundred and forty thousand is in there, the planned reduction of a hundred thousand dollars for the general fund is spent there and then put back the buses. So it nets out to be forty-five thousand dollars that we can spend down the general fund next year. And this is, again, is based on the five hundred dollar referendum we currently have. It doesn't include adding on a three hundred dollar referendum or stacking the four point four on it. If we were to do that, that'd be increased revenue to the district.
But we would get it till the next school year, would we?
Of course, it's gonna show up again the fiscal year twelve. Okay, yeah. So that's just kind of a basic outline of where the general fund lies at the front of the page. So the revenues are in there for the new formula, we got the what-if statement just recently, and that's the reasoning between getting this laid out to you and emailed out to you. But so you see that the general fund, a negative forty-six thousand dollars, and again, we have a good positive cash flow balance or fund balance there, not necessarily what you would wanna have from an audit standpoint, you'd like to see a higher balance, but we are positive, which is a good thing. Spending this fifty thousand dollars down is very doable for us. Food service, about twenty-five hundred dollars to the good, next year projected on the preliminary budget, community add about two thousand dollars ahead. We don't have construction. The debt service, that's gonna be set up based on our levy. There is potential, that's the max levy. Last year we reduced it manually by two hundred thousand dollars to help lower some taxes because we had an excess of debt revenue. That may be a possibility. Again, when we get closer to doing the levy, and if that is, we'll certainly do that because that'll help all taxpayers with handfalls. Trust and Agency, that's a scholarship, and that's based on kind of revenue we receive and what goes out, about two-three hundred dollars, we'll spend that down, and that's pretty typical. The OPEP trust is to help pay recurring benefits, well, actually have a hundred thousand dollar draw down there, but with some interest, I believe we wanna draw it down about ninety thousand dollars next year. And it is, like you said, set to pay for ten years. And then the OPEP debt services to service that debt. And again, generally when the debt levies are set up, we receive, or they try to collect one hundred, one, five percent extra, so they collect a hundred and five percent. Generally, handfalls, we collect real well, so we are able to reduce some of the debt service. And that's why there's, you see an excess of debt service in Fund Forty-seven. Again, that's one that we can adjust when it comes time to do our levy, certify it. So there, just kind of summary, real quick, if you put everything all together, there's a general fund worth at, and that's really the one that we're mainly concerned of when we talk cuts and whatnot. It is the largest by far budget that we have, over ten million dollars. Going to the next pages, I think this is really up here for you, if you wanna kind of look and see where they kind of fall into the program. General fund is broken down by district-wide, elementary and high school, so there's three areas within the district-wide. And then inside of those are all the different programs. So the first one you see there is the district-wide general fund, and then all the programs, you know, your operations and maintenance are gonna fall in there, transportation's gonna fall in there, you know, the more education's in superintendent's office, all fall within the district-wide. You see about a fifty thousand dollar increase in the total when you put everything all together. Elementary, we go down through the whole thing, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar increase or a change. And this, I shouldn't say increase, all everyone is comparing will be revised for the final fiscal year thirteen, last month versus the initial preliminary for next month. So really the net change isn't, we've increased it by this much or that much, this is really the change from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen. So it could be a matter of some staffing changes, it could be a matter of we spent, we had a purchase last year that we're not having this year, or a purchase fiscal year fourteen we're not having fiscal year thirteen. So those are really just for your information or to compare things to, really you were looking on that middle column and the fiscal year fourteen initial budget. So we kind of work through the expenditures and then we get to, I'm not sure if the page shows, your last page is gonna be the revenues. And on the top there, the local sources, where you see the, in the middle, one point five-five-nine million, that's gonna be where when we decide to add referendums or stack those, the three hundred and the four twenty-four, that's where you're gonna see that number increase. If we were to go to the seven twenty-four, it's about three hundred thousand dollar bump to the district, which based on this budget would give us a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar surplus at the end if all things were stayed hopefully the way that they should project it out. Again, this is a large bull's eye we were trying to throw at. And it will be revised several times throughout the year. Next May, when it come around, we'll be revising this one real tight again, but these are the preliminary numbers. Really what, I guess, the feedback that we're looking forward to approve would be that for your first page, the summary, buy fund. And then we kind of go from there. If there are any questions, I can certainly do my best to ask. Some I may have to do a digging for you, but it'll certainly help with whatever I can.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen budget.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Well, Tim, last time you weren't prepared for this. I'm gonna put Josh aside. You had other things that were much more important than the year.
Oh, nine? Yeah, I have just, I think, three things that are changes to next year's handbook. So on page forty-six, the very last thing on the page, we had a major revision last year and that weapons policy got dropped out. We're just adding that little word back in, referencing back to policy number five-on-one of the board policy. So that's the only real add. The other two things are very minor, based on our secretarial cut under middle school, high school offices, the office hours for next year will be seven-thirty a.m. to three-thirty p.m. So that's where that half hour a day cutting time comes. And then the other thing was, page fifty-one, I think, there is a reference in there under lunches, does grade seven through twelve, but apparently that's just one that's been missed since sixth grade went up here. So under lunch periods, it should say lunch periods for grades six through twelve are closed.
Make a motion to approve standard.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion?
Cashier hours change as well on the page forty-seven.
Oh, was that another one that changed too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Then at some point we...
Page forty-seven. We change the office hours and the cashier hours from two-thirty to two p.m. And that's still, I believe that's what we worked out with Stephanie, she's gonna go seven-thirty to two. She may wanna change that to, I don't know, seven-forty-five to two-fifteen, depending on what works better for her to see kids and parents and stuff. But we're gonna go with this for right now.
Can I make a recommendation for future?
Sure.
On page forty-three, your dress code?
Oh.
No.
Really?
Can we do that?
Make recommendations?
I think there's way too much midriff and not enough belts worn in school, whichever gender you'd like to choose, I don't care.
It's up over. You know, we talk about this one a lot because this ends up being a hot-button issue for staff a lot of times. I would say this, we have very, very few boys who push anything as far as dress code other than the content of the T-shirts that they choose to wear to school. And for the most part, when I talk to those kids about that, it's not a major issue. With, as far as revealing clothing that girls wear, that seems to be a fashion thing that goes in cycles. And fortunately, right now, the cycle is to be more covered, but for the clothing to be a little bit tighter. I have an eight-year-old girl and I'm just kind of dreading when she gets up here. But anyway, it's something that we watch and, you know, we discuss a lot. And that's one of the reasons why we leave the dress policy kind of a little bit vague is to give us the ability to adjust to those different fashion trends. So if there's any specific concerns, by all means, let me know and we'll...
So you have the capability of somebody's underdressed to address.
Final discretion is always up to the president.
Yep.
So now Jerry will open more broad than making phone calls to Tim.
That's good. I'm glad I don't have to make any of those calls. I don't know if you did once.
You know what, I'd say this, is I've been to other places where it's been a lot worse than what we deal with here. I know that, you know, that perspective doesn't always mean a lot, but like the guys, you know, almost every one of our boys wears their pants up over their underpants, which is what I kind of, how I kind of explain to them.
It's funny because I talked to a principal in another district, Southern Minnesota, and it's, if girls are wearing shorts, it's gotta be to their knees, or they go home. Go home and change.
Well, and that's one of those hard things because, you know, in middle school, you've got just developmentally, you've got girls that are ninety pounds, but they're six feet tall, so they're this big around at the waist.
Right.
And to find clothes that fit this waist means that, you know, they're generally proportional to somebody who's five feet tall as opposed to six feet tall. So, you know, sometimes it gets hard, especially for girls with the fashion trends, to find something that really does fit in what we call appropriate ways at school. Now, that leaves the decision-making up to me and to the rest of the staff to decide, you know, kind of, are you pushing it?
Balls and yakkies.
And my son goes to one of those schools where he does, that's what he's from, so...
How does he like it?
Well, he's a boy, so he doesn't really care.
He doesn't care no matter what he wears on.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
We're way past you, Brenda's made one in person.
Yeah. We're in discussion mode.
Been a while, but all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Attachment O, consideration to approve our assistant coaches for the fall. Each year we, ahead of time, approve the head coaches, followed up with the assistants. And if you look at Attachment O, they're all listed. The one that catches your eye immediately is probably the number of football coaches, which has increased greatly, but in talking to Jake, that doesn't mean that we're paying anymore, that is subsidized.
Correct, that's the way football's children do that last couple of years, actually. They agree to take on less of salary and they split between a couple of coaches. No extra money is being paid, all they just put their salaries.
Is that at the request of Josh, the head coach?
I believe that's all started, yep. And we do work agreements, they sign it saying this is what you're gonna get paid, so there's no questions asked. Paychecks go.
So every coach in the system has a background check and all that, correct?
Yep.
The only issue that I have with it, and just like taking the buses, perception in the district is everything. If people see ten football coaches sitting on the sideline and we're asking for a referendum and people don't understand, the school's only divvying out so much assistant coach money, just like when they take the buses, people drive by and see people hold up on those nice buses, coach buses to leave, and then they turn around and we're asking for referendum money, and people are going, how can you have ten coaches and how can you have coach buses? That's the only issue that I have with having ten varsity coaches.
And that's real, I certainly have all heard.
Right. Because perception is everything. But if all the money's the same and it doesn't matter if they have, I don't care if they have twenty coaches and here's your money for their coaches, I guess I'm fine with that, but they need to also like come around the way I think in a perception. And I think it just gives a bad perception to have ten varsity coaches sitting on the sideline with forty players.
You have fifteen assistant right here.
Yeah, there's fifteen assistant coaches plus the head coach, so that's sixteen football coaches.
Well, take another bus, as long as we're, don't take another bus for the coaching staff, too. Sixteen's a lot.
So some of these are just volunteering, Jake, too?
I don't believe any are volunteer, they just get...
So it's coming out of that general budget, not coming from the booster clubs or anything like that?
I talked to Coach Hossitt today, there may be some booster club payments, but if they do, it's only coming from the booster clubs, it's not coming from bowl.
Okay. And now it's gotta flow the correct way to events do. That's, I think that's one of our issues from the past.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we also got volleyball, tennis and soccer here, and the soccer one has yet to be resolved. You're probably going through your process.
Yeah, I'm in courses right now.
Yeah. So what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry to approve the fall assistant coaches as listed. Second? Second?
I'll second for some discussion, a little bit of discussion, I think.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion by Jerry, a seconded by Kurt. Kurt, lead some discussion.
I guess it just seems like that's still a lot of coaches for a football team. I'm just, I don't necessarily care, but if it's coming also from booster clubs, at what point as a district are we looking at how many coaches are being signed up for a team? I mean, because even though the money is collected from, well, money comes from someplace. It comes from the district, it comes from the people out there, they're donating money for a sport, but is it being spent appropriately? And we have to rely on the coaches for that. Do we look at what other districts are doing for coaching staff? Are they, do they have fifteen coaches on a roster? You know, at what point do we say, okay, that's quite a bit, that's, you know, are we, is the money being spent appropriately? That's my concern right now.
Or do we just count the number of assistant coaches on the sideline?
Well, I don't wanna say it's my say, it really comes down to it Josh wants, but are we really getting the best bang for the buck by taking on fifteen coaches? You know, it seems excessive. What did we do twenty years ago? How many coaches were out there then? You know, is anyone, do we even know? I mean, where are we getting the biggest bang for the buck by going with fifteen coaches if we're paying for that?
if we're paying for that?
If I throw out the other, the other statement is, what is it hurting us? If we're paying the same rate, I don't think we've raised coaching pay in a number of years, so essentially, we're paying the same thing for coaches as we did probably four years ago. So, you know, I think the last time we froze extracurricular. So, you know, I understand that, I certainly support the position, but it doesn't have any direct bearing on us per se, I don't think.
I think you're looking at more of the booster club, if they're going to be paying thousands of dollars towards assistant coaches.
Right.
It never flows through us anyhow, it doesn't affect our budget, but all of a sudden, we got twenty-five coaches, assistant coaches on the sideline, each collecting a thousand dollars, not from the district, but from the boosters, at what point do you kind of go, wow?
I think that gets wrapped up into the current, the flowing conversation between booster clubs and our school board reps about what direction we're going to go.
Right.
Certainly, if we look at their expenditures, and, you know, that's something we can critique with them and just say, you know, whatever our wishes are, but it's kind, it's kind of tough if it doesn't impact us directly, if we're paying the same rate. But, but I understand.
Yeah, and I agree with you, but I also think that Josh needs to sit down and take a look and, and really give us a realistic number. Do I think it's overboard? I, I think it's overboard, but I also agree with you, it really doesn't matter to us because they're getting X dollars, no matter if they have five coaches or a hundred coaches, and I get that part of it, but it goes back to, again, the wrong perception. We're not a national program, we're a high school football program. And I agree, but, and my feeling is, people are donating to these booster clubs, too, and it's like, please use this wisely, you know? Are you using it because, you know, I can put a coach here, I can put a coach there, I can put a coach here, are you getting the best bang for the buck? And that's where the district does come into play with the, you know, you have your requests, and as a district, we can say, look, does this sound appropriate as a district that you're utilizing the booster club money appropriately? I'm not saying it is or isn't, but I don't want to go down a slippery slope and say, boy, now we're just throwing money here and there, and they're going out to the community to buy, get more and more money, so we can buy more and more coaches, you know, it, I just don't, I want to make sure we're taking the right direction. Right, I just think Josh needs to reevaluate his staff. Is, is ten assistant varsity coaches that necessary?
Right. Well, for a long time, we were understaffed with football coaches, we were, we were on the low end of the HVL, that was pretty well-known, you know, by past boards, but it's what we could afford. We're still affording the same amount. I agree with you guys, it looks like a lot, for sure.
Well, I'm looking at football, for example, okay, you got an offense, defense, you got a strength, let's say you've got a wide receiver, quarterback, running back, guard, I mean, you're looking at most coaching position on the team, you're like, wow, fifteen assistant coaches, you've got eleven.
When those states don't have that many.
You got eleven positions on a side, you know, you, now you're going to be back safety, cornerback, linebacker, lineman.
Some of these will be, they'll double as JV head coach and varsity quarterbacks coach or something like that. You know, there's a, there's a C squad offensive coordinator, C squad defensive coordinator, C squad JV offensive coordinator, you know.
Two for seven, two for eight.
Yeah. And then they, the high school ones double as probably a position coach on varsity.
Hi. It's good conversation, again, it's, we'll, if you decide to approve this, you know, we'll continue to look at it for future years. Okay, we have a motion by Jerry, a seconded by Kurt, we've had discussion, all in favor of approving the fall assistant coaches as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve Melissa Kappas as third grade teacher. Derek?
Correct. We finally hired a third grade teacher, she's very excited to be a momma, she comes to us with experience, I think she'll fit in very nicely with our third grade team, she's going to be an asset to Cannon, so we're happy to have her.
I'll make a motion to approve Melissa Kappas as third grade teacher.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving down to reports, board members, anything for the cause this evening? I'm moving on then, committee, committee reports, policy committee, we, probably not doing much this summer curriculum, not this month's facility.
July fifteenth, six thirty p.m. with CTS. We would also like to have a facility meeting this Thursday with just the principals, Dave and I. Do you want to be on, Jake, too? Jake? We were thinking nine o'clock, if either of you guys can make that, that's fine, but we want to talk about things that are just kind of on campus, small stuff.
What was the date time on that one?
Nine o'clock on Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Nine a.m.
Which is July?
July fifteenth is a Monday.
A Monday.
Six, that's the one, the email chain you've been in on, six thirty p.m. with CTS. They're also presenting at the next board meeting.
That's at nine a.m.
This Thursday, nine a.m., July fifteenth, six thirty p.m.
Okay, Supes report?
You've heard enough from me tonight.
Okay, we'll move on. Dave, you had a huge page here, lots going on in your life in the summertime, always.
Huge things, yeah.
Do you want to comment?
Just a couple of things there, it was Cannon Equipment donated bike racks in the school district, we got four new bike racks, so we're going to be putting two of them over at the elementary. Two of them are going to go by the field house entryway, this summer we'll be putting in cement pads on each side of the entryway, one side will be provided here, I want to put cement benches in there, just clean up that entryway and stuff like that, so that, let's see, just looking at repairs and stuff like that, picks and cracks and asphalt and stuff, P.A. system and stuff over at the elementary school.
Where are we at on that, Dave? We were just talking about that today. Are we getting close on that? It's got to be up and going for the beginning of spring.
July, we'll be looking at that. Couple of things looking at over at the bus garage, I mentioned the panels, about putting in a field house in the human museum, looking at some cover replacement in the high school here, we talked about CTS, stuff like that, let's see, last summer's bears are a little bit wet, and hopefully this summer will not be as wet.
Is that it?
Yep.
That's pretty good, we got about twenty items here. This is your time, isn't it? Under the gun to get things finished. Okay, principals report. Tim?
As shown? Yes. I, I went through, I went through last week just as a note, I went through a twenty-seven thousand line spreadsheet to enter our transcript into our new student information system. That was really fun. I didn't know that spreadsheets went up to twenty-seven thousand lines, but.
They go beyond that, actually.
I don't want to do that again.
So again, the, the reports are in the back of individuals. Derek, what do you have for us?
As a motive.
How's Derek about his hiring?
How's your hiring?
How, how does that go for you?
I'm in a tough time.
Motive question, huh?
Yeah. We'll get through it. Sorry, I couldn't handle great tonight. What's that?
What position's you got to hire?
Two.
He's on tonight's. He's got, well, EBD now in fifth grade still, interviewed today for fifth grade, though. So hopefully you'll have someone by tomorrow.
Hopefully.
They're very trickling into those positions, from other positions, yeah.
EBD would be a tough field.
Quite a few applications, though.
Yeah.
Looking good.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Community ed and activity report. Jake?
Might conclude, there are questions.
So it's got to steal that people are talking a lot.
Lori makes us type them up, so.
Jake, you got to mention a two athletes.
Yeah, Emmy Trail state champion, came to Moscow, participated in the state golf tournament.
That's awesome.
Ready?
No, by all, that was all right.
Okay, upcoming meetings, regular board meeting of July twenty-two, and I, I believe we dealt with the insurance post B, that should be off unless there's other things there.
We're also not going to have Aylors do the legislative update, they're going to come to our finance meeting instead. That made more sense. Because we'll have CTS, that savings presentation that night, I don't want two presentations the same night, and a lot of the legislative stuff I was able to give you tonight, but it'll be nice to have Aylors go through the numbers with the finance committee.
Finance meeting?
I, I got to check it with Aylors, so he's getting back to me some dates.
Okay. Anyone that wishes to throw something on that July twenty-two meeting, you know, contact Lori or Beth and see if we can get it on.
Public forum.
Scheduled presenters should contact the office at least one week prior to the meeting, but three to five minutes will be allowed to, will be allowed to address the board issues on issues that are not on the agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Closed, that was quick.
I'll make a motion.
You made a motion to close out, did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay. It's the only time you mumbled all day. Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry to adjourn. Any other discussion items? If not, adjourn.